To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the digital with liberty and justice for all.
What a horrible song to get stuck in your head, the song that never ends. Oh. Yeah, John, you're just gonna have to kick me.
I don't think they agreed yet for it.
Do you have short legs?
I do. But I have a letter opener.
Here we go. Is this gonna be board of health or just, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
Well, I've got nine o'clock, gonna open up the meeting of the Chavo County Commissioners. The agenda on the minutes, I've got a couple of things on there I need to check. In the last paragraph, where it says the agreement states that the city would over the cost, should be covered, I think.
Okay.
And then down below, it says the sheriff's office would provide three handheld tables. I think, I think that might be different. And that the sheriff's office is not to provide this stuff, it's the city provided to the sheriff's office. Way I read the denim.
Okay.
Did you guys read the denim?
Yeah.
That's what it says, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
I caught that cover, I didn't catch the table deal.
Yeah.
One of them, I call it Shelly.
Well, and that sheriff is not to provide the equipment either. Okay, that's all I've got on that.
I approve the consent agenda in the minutes of the oral meeting.
Do you have?
I move to accept it.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and second, we accept the consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes. If there's no other discussion on that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Well, I guess this is gonna be a health board meeting.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna close the commission meeting and open up the Chavo County Health Department meeting.
Good morning. Just wanted to give you a few updates of some changes that have happened recently. First, I wanted to start by showing you that our office was able to fill seventy bags for it. I'll pass it around if you can't see it over there. Seventy bags of essential items for senior citizens and the Senior Citizens Center helped us to distribute these with Meals on Wheels last week. So we were able to provide them with Kleenex and toilet paper and paper towels and some hand soap and things like that, just to, you know, for that population who maybe doesn't want to get out as much. So we were able to do seventy bags with the donation. So I wanted to share that with you. And as you know, the governor has released her phased plan for reopening the state. So with that, we have the ability to not go less than her rules, but we can go more. So after discussion with Dr. Kabar and our emergency manager Ray, we've come up with kind of a working document. So this is gonna be something that will be changing as kind of time progresses, of course, because this virus is changing so fast. So I wanted to give you all a copy of that and then we could... So we started contacting businesses on Friday as far as what our guidance was going to be for them reopening. And it really doesn't differ that much from what the governor says. We're just asking, you know, wanted to have that conversation with business owners and asking them to implement a couple of things before they reopen. So as always, we want to stay six feet away from other individuals and only interact with people of the same household when possible. And then limiting all non-essential travel. I am recommending that everyone wear masks in public. We'll talk about this in a little bit, but with what we have going on with our neighbors to the west, and we're starting to see some of that overflow traffic, I think it would be a good idea for us all to be wearing masks when we're in a public setting and we can't maintain that six feet of distancing. So that is on the green pages there. Just the same essentials that we've always talked about, practicing good hand hygiene and avoiding touching your face. They have updated the symptoms of COVID-19 to include headache and some things like that. So the symptoms are, the list of symptoms is growing more as we learn more about this virus. As well as some people are just really not as sick at all when they're being tested, when they're testing positive. So just encouraging that vulnerable and high-risk population to stay home as much as possible and to try to limit groups. So you can kind of read through the plan. We did it through essential businesses, which would be like the courthouse, just encouraging to screen for fevers. Employees should wear masks when they can't socially distance. Working from home should be maximized. That was a, that was on the governor's plan. And common areas such as break rooms and lobbies should still be closed at this time. Restaurants are allowed to open to dine in only as of today, but they are being asked to adhere to social gathering and distancing guidelines. So you can come in with your family and you can be seated and eat all at the same table, but the very next family or group has to be six feet away from you. Just really encouraging enhanced cleaning and sanitation throughout the day and discuss with them, you know, anything that a person would touch from door handles to the backs of the chairs to the cushions and the benches, anything like that. Having hand sanitizer available, which our office was able to get some from Boot Hill Distillery. So we are sharing that with the public as needed. They can just bring their bottles in and refill at our office for no charge. We're just doing that for them. Encouraged restaurants to do reservations as well, especially if they have a party of, you know, several people that want to eat together. And asking that marks be placed on the floor behind the cash register so that there's not that, we're trying to limit that congregating at any one particular spot, so at the front door and at the cash register and things like that. And that beverages are, they have to be in their original container. So Chiva County is still not going to allow fountain drinks or self-serve coffee at this time. They have to be served by an employee. Again, we're trying to reduce that transmission risk for there. And those things really don't change as much as we go through the retail businesses and different things like that. We want to limit the number of people in the stores if at all possible and the same system of guidelines. Unfortunately, barber shops and salons were not allowed to be open during this phase according to the governor's plan. And so the earliest date that they would possibly be able to open will be May 18th. And that's if everything is going in a positive favor as far as the numbers of Kansas. Recreational activities in the rec center are still to be closed. Parks, public places and playground equipment, the parks were never closed, but we have been sectioning off the playground equipment because there's no real way to sanitize, sanitize those things. And so after speaking with Dr. Kabar, we're going to allow the playground equipment to be open, but just putting up a note saying, you know, due to the COVID crisis that's going on, you know, you are responsible for your own sanitation and cleaning. So just spoke with the cities about having something like that around their playground equipment. And just really encouraging parents to be disinfecting as well. Public swimming pools closed at this time. We will revisit that discussion in two weeks when we see where the numbers are at. Community events, again, we can't have any more than ten people together in a setting, so we still have to go with that. Churches, I'll be sending out my, some guidance, we'll say, I guess, for them. They were never, they never had to close. We encouraged social distancing and limiting of people and that's kind of the plan that we're still going to be sticking with. And no handshaking or sharing of the microphone, things like that. Just again, trying to limit the things that people would touch and interact with at the same time. The museum in Soto Fountain, which actually, I need to look at this one. I might skip over that one, I'll look at that one again in a minute. And then the library, she actually developed her own plan as far as cleaning and reopening in a staged effect. So I'll let Cassie speak to you on that, but libraries are going to be able to be open. So that was kind of just our, and then there, on the back, there's guidance for wearing a mask, not only just for county employees, but for people in general. If you can maintain six feet of social distance and it's your personal private space, your desk or your office, or if you're in a room alone, no mask is needed. If social distancing cannot be maintained, like if you're looking over the same document or the same computer, then you should have a mask. Or going from office to office or in a room that's not your own, should have a mask. If you're in a common space, hallway, stairway or bathroom, you should have a mask. This is gonna be a common theme that we kind of have throughout the rest of the year because this is not going to be going away. So just kind of get everybody used to wearing a mask when they go out in public. So that was the guidance that we had. Are there any questions about any of this?
Carrie?
Yes.
We had somebody ask where can they get a mask?
We have some at our office that we're giving out. So you can come into our office. People have sewn homemade masks and donated them to our office for us to give out to other people, so. Chiva County does have its second positive case. This is a contact from our initial case, the same household. Patient A first was showing symptoms on April 21st and was tested, tested positive on April 22nd. They began practicing distancing, but patient B did start showing symptoms on 4/27 and tested positive this weekend. So they are same household, but our second, our second contact.
Is the first one about over or?
The first one is, is feeling much better, yeah, on day three of no symptoms. So the CDC and KDHE just updated the guidelines. So instead of seven days, it's now ten days to be symptom-free. So they extended that a little bit longer just because so many people are not showing like really advanced symptoms, we'll say, pretty mild symptoms. So ten days of no fever and no symptoms and then that person is allowed to go back to work line.
Neither, neither one have been in hospital?
No, no one's been hospitalized.
Good.
Yeah, yes, it's very good news. Symptoms have been able to be managed from home and we were able to work with the doctors over the weekend to get needed medicine and things out to them, so. Okay, and so then the next thing I wanted to show you was kind of what the current rates are for Kansas as far as yesterday. So these won't, wouldn't have been updated yet this morning. So as you can see on the map, that there's a little over 5,000 cases statewide. If you look down at Chiva County, that second positive case did show up on the map yesterday. So we do have two. Ford County and Wyandotte County have been kind of going back and forth with who gets the top spot for highest numbers in the state. It's really increasing. And a couple of things to keep in mind, the regulations for testing have been lifted. So now testing is much more readily available. And also testing is being done on anyone who is having pre-surgery. So pre-operatively, people are being tested. So you're going to start seeing the numbers of testing, the percentages for our county increasing for those particular reasons. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're seeing more positives, but just that we are going to be seeing more people being tested. If you flip this over to the backside with the lighter blue and gray, it shows you the testing rates by county. So for your population, as you see, we're at 9.29% and Ford County is at 56%. So quite a variation there.
That's 9.29 for a thousand.
Per thousand.
Okay, so point nine percent.
Point nine percent, yes, thank you.
None of these two that you've got were tests you've sent in?
Yes, they are tests we've sent in.
Just ones that you've sent in yourself, okay.
Well, I mean, the lab, yes, KCMH lab. They're the ones who do the testing.
They don't never take a name or number off the list when they recover, do they?
They do not.
They don't, no figure showing what's recovered out of that?
I can get that for you. It's actually on the website. You can see the recovered and the percentages and things like that. I did not print that out.
I was just wondering, you know, how many of the eight hundred and so on, Ford County has recovered?
That would be interesting to know and I, I think it's a little too soon for that kind of data to be out just because they're still so inundated with testing and getting contacts and things like that.
Yeah. If you know that, that's like, you want to know how many has recovered or how many is still in?
Sure.
You know, glad it.
If you refer back to that, the cases from Chiva County where patient A was showing symptoms on April 21st and after discussion with this patient, you know, we made suggestions as far as the social distancing guidance and things like that. And patient B didn't show symptoms for another five days. So that can be anywhere from five to 15 days if they could show symptoms after being contacted. So it's definitely a working, a working graph. It doesn't really show, like when we talk about percentages, that's really hard to keep track of at this point.
And Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is KDHE doesn't have county by county recovered numbers?
No, just statewide as far as I'm aware.
I think last recall, something around a thousand have recovered.
Yeah, I didn't, I did not print that out. I could sure get that information for you guys, though.
Coach, you know, with Ford County with eight hundred and so, are their hospitals staying up with that?
So far, they had their second death related to COVID at the end of last week. And so far their hospitals are able to stay up with it. A lot of these people are either asymptomatic, so they're not showing as many symptoms, or they're not sick enough to be hospitalized. And that is, is a good thing for the, for the individual. Unfortunately, what that does is, is if you're not sick and if you're not feeling bad, what do you want to do? You want to go back to work. You want to go out and get groceries. You want to go do those kinds of things. It's where if you were, if you're really sick, you want to stay home. So it's kind of a positive and negative all in one thing.
Well, there was only like six or seven out of Ford County that had been hospitalized at all over this, is that?
I don't have that data in front of me, but I can, next time I'll bring my computer and we can just look it up.
Well, I was surprised at how few hospitalizations there have been considering how many people have tested positive. So a lot of people are already getting over it and going on.
But I would probably imagine out of that eight hundred, probably 300 of them is probably already over.
It might be a little too soon for that high percentage considering it takes sometimes two and three weeks to get, to get over it and to be testing negative. It could take a little bit longer.
They don't retest after, after they get it and so long, say two or three weeks, they retest them again?
I, you know, that's up to the, where they were. Some places are demanding a negative test before they go back and some places are not.
You think there's a different strains going around? Do you notice how some of them are real severe and some of them doesn't have any effect?
You know, that is one of the conversations that's been, that's been had clear from when this started in New York because the symptoms have continued to change and kind of as it's migrated across. And so that is definitely something that is a conversation, but no data yet at this time.
Now I think it must be some, something to it. They had a terrible strain in New York apparently.
Well, and the proximity of people, you know, we have the luxury of being able to social distance a lot more than, than people who all live in the same apartment building in New York City. So you just think about the common space just at the door. If one person is positive and they, you know, touch their face and then touch that door, there it is for the next two days. And so anybody who walked in and out of that apartment building is going to now be exposed to that virus. So we don't have the numbers and we're not stacked on top of each other.
Well, I say that it must be worse back here, but I haven't heard what the recovery rate is back here. Maybe it's just as good as it is anywhere.
Yeah, recovery is not something that has been top priority because they're just trying to get, as far as like keeping numbers on, they're starting to look at recovery rates, but it just is probably gonna be data that we won't have for some time. So I just wanted to kind of show you where we were at in comparison to some of our neighbors. Because with, with the county reopening, most of its facilities either this, today or on the 18th, that we would need to discuss reopening the courthouse at some point. We had a department head meeting last week just to go over office by office about what the specific needs were for reopening to the public. My recommendation is doing a limited opening at whatever date you guys choose, just possibly by appointment, possibly having the phone numbers at the door to where we could, somebody could just call and meet directly just to keep, again, that traffic at doorways and infolges and things like that down. But that was a discussion I wanted to have with you guys as far as, as setting a date for reopening the courthouse to the public.
In my opinion, better wait and see what happens out west of us before we make a date.
Okay.
Set a date.
Okay, so you want to revisit it in two weeks when the governor?
I think that'd be good.
James' face too?
Yeah, we're opening the rest of the businesses, aren't we, pretty much? And some people still can't get in and even get a tag for their car. I don't know.
Or pay their taxes that are due.
But they can. You can send them mail. I say you can, I sent my tag in, they haven't got it back. I think I will though.
You know, I mean, there's, there's two different ways to look at this. You know, in our office and in the hospital, I feel like we've done a really good job at taking the preemptive steps, wearing masks, setting things in place, and no one in our office has contracted, no one at the hospital has. You know, we've been able to put those things in place, those guidelines to, you know, to keep the virus at bay. Is the situation gonna be a little bit different here? Because you're talking, you know, multiple entrances that we can't really shut down and, you know, there's different scenarios there. But I just wanted to kind of at least have that discussion of we're putting things in place on a, on an office level to get ready for being open.
What would your thought be on us, when we should open it up?
If Ford County wasn't right next to us, I'd say that we would be ready right now. Like I said, we've put things in place, we give everybody masks, we have plans in place for how to stagger our employees. And I think if we can do it on a limited basis, that that would be something that we could discuss.
Do we have enough masks to hand up people as they enter?
Is that a requirement? Because aren't most people just like getting their own masks at home?
Well, I mean, we can make, it could always be a requirement to enter. Some stores and places have done that, but just thinking for right now, how many people necessarily are gonna have?
Gonna have a mask with them.
Are we just gonna say, well, you need to bring your own mask? If you don't have your own mask, well?
Here's the bug. You know, I was...
Planning for that type of situation?
Sure. I, when I was at the, I was at Pratt Hospital this last week and they actually have washable masks that they allow patrons to use while they're in, in the space. And then they either wash them or let them take them home. So maybe that's something that we could also discuss. I mean, we do have people donating masks, the cloth masks. As far as the procedure masks and things like that, we do not have enough to pass those around for the, for the public. So it would have to be a homemade mask.
How much good does the mask really do? Does anybody know? I mean, I've heard that it's actually better if the sick person wears the mask and he's not blowing the germs out than it is for the well person trying to prevent sucking them in.
Well, it depends on the well person, because there's so many different things there. Is that well person washing their hands?
Depends on the quality of the masks, I'm sure. A homemade mask made out of fishing nets not gonna do any good compared to a professional hospital-type mask.
Sure.
But a homemade mask made out of cloth?
A mask at any point isn't gonna do any good if somebody comes in and seizes on the counter and you touch it, then you touch your face. So I mean, it's, it's one of the things that will help you, but, but not the only thing. It's not like if you wear a mask, it's just a suit of armor that keeps it away. You have to be very diligent about hand washing and things like that.
Well, I'd think it'd be better with than without.
Any protection is better than none. And yes, it is better for the sick person to do it. Unfortunately, as we refer back to the Ford County thing, so many of those people are not symptomatic.
They don't know they're sick.
And they don't know they're sick, which is why I'm just encouraging everyone when they're out in public to wear a mask. I think it's just good standard practice. Everyone two and up, I should say, adults.
One thing we will have to address is depending on when we reopen and when the court, the Kansas Supreme Court permits us to reopen. Because we have two competing things with our courts is when the Kansas Supreme Court will permit us to and then when we reopen as in our courthouse for when our court reopens. Is one thing we need to consider about this because to be real blunt, the vast majority of my defense...
You know, multiple entrances um that we can't really uh shut down and, you know, there's different scenarios there. But I just wanted to kind of at least have that discussion of we're putting things in place on a and on office level. To get ready for being open.
What would your thought be on this? When we should open it up?
If Ford County wasn't right next to us, I'd say that we would be ready right now. Um like I said, we we've put things in place. We give everybody masks. We have plans in place for for how to stagger our our employees. And I think if we can do it on a limited basis, um that that would be something that we could discuss.
Do we have enough masks to hand up people as they enter?
Is that a requirement? Cause aren't most people just re- like getting their own masks at home?
Well, I mean, we can make, you, it could always be a requirement to enter. Some stores and places have done that. But just thinking for right now, how many people necessarily are gonna have?
Gonna have a mask with.
Are we just gonna say, well, you need to bring your own mask if you don't have your own mask? Well.
Here's the bug. You know, I was.
Planning for that type of situation?
Sure. I wa- when I was at the, I was at Pratt Hospital this last week. And they actually have uh washable masks that they allow patrons to use while they're in in the space. And then they either wash them or let them take them home. So maybe that's something that we could also discuss. And we do have people donating masks. The cloth masks. As far as the procedural masks and things like that, we do not have enough to uh to pass those around for the for the public. So it would have to be a homemade mask.
How much good does the mask really do? Does anybody know? I mean, I've heard that it's actually better if the sick person wears the mask and he's not blowing the germs out than it is for the 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 well person trying to prevent sucking them in.
Well, it depends on the well person, cause there's so many different things there. Is that well person washing their hands?
The masks, I'm sure. A homemade mask ma- made out of fishing net is not gonna do any good compared to a professional hospital type mask.
Sure.
But a homemade mask made out of cloth.
A mask at any point isn't gonna do any good if somebody comes in and seizes on the counter and you touch it and then you touch your face. So I mean, it's it's one of the things that will help you um. But but not the only thing. It's not like if you wear a mask, it's just a suit of armor that keeps it away. You have to be very diligent about hand washing and things like that.
Well, I'd I'd think it'd be better with than without.
Any protection is better than none. And yes, it is better for the sick person to do it. Unfortunately, as we refer back to the the Ford County thing, so many of those people are not symptomatic.
They don't know they're sick.
And they don't know they're sick, which is why I'm just encouraging everyone when they're out in public to wear a mask. I think it's just good standard practice. Everyone two and up, I should say, adults.
One thing we will have to address is depending on when we reopen. And when the court, the Kansas Supreme Court permits us to reopen. Cause we have two competing things with our courts is when the Kansas Supreme Court will permit us to. And then when we reopen as in our courthouse for when our court fit reopens. Is one thing we need to consider about this, because to be real blunt, the vast majority of my defendants come from Ford County. Uh a lot of them work at packing plant, a lot of those type things, and how to address that. Judge, uh sheriff and I are having a meeting after this to kind of start powwowing to figure out what our strategy exactly is gonna be. When that does come to be, but um it's just something to keep in mind for right now that, you know. The fact matters, our community has a lot of interaction with Ford County. We have people from Ford County that work here. We have people here who work in Ford County. And that type of interaction isn't gonna stop. Now, people are mitigating their travel to Ford County, but we have a lot of people who have no choice. They've gotta go. Um and I just think we need to keep that in mind for making our determinations. Because even if this is, let's say a less, let's say it is a different strain and let's say it isn't as dangerous. That doesn't change the KDAG quarantine protocols. You know, if we have someone who comes in here who's positive, who doesn't abide, who. Interacts with our employees, you know, we're still gonna be in the same boat. Even if, no, if it is a less barrel, you know, less dangerous strain, that's great. That's great. But that's not gonna change what we're gonna have to do in compliance with the KDAG protocols.
Kristi, you work here. What are your thoughts on opening partially or fully? Or what are you, what would, what would you be comfortable with? Do you think a limited opening or keep it shut down another couple of weeks?
Well, um right now, I don't believe that we should open up until we have everything in place. Um we're looking at making some changes to how the patrons are gonna come to our offices. As in like uh uh we talked about making half doors with our doors and putting up a barrier there. And there's all kinds of things that we're discussing. And I don't really think it's time to open up until we are actually able to get that all set up. And that's not gonna happen tomorrow. That's stuff that's gonna be, it could be two weeks before we have all the supplies that we need. Cause the sanitize or the sanitizing is really gonna have to uh pick up. Because um with that exposure coming in, we don't have, you know, I I don't know what we have in supply. So right now, I don't think we should open up until we have everything that we need to protect us.
This, yeah, the sneeze guards are still in progress, things like that. Like we're would, we're putting things in place. I would not say that we're ready to open today, but I do think that we should look at setting a goal of of getting. Getting things open to the public because.
You think we'll do that until the eighteenth and that meeting decide, discuss it again?
Well, as of the eighteenth, everything will be able to be open as far as businesses and things like that. So I think that that would be a good, a good date to set as a goal.
One way we might want to approach it as far as for when to open is, the governor, I think, did a really interesting thing. Let's go to that with her phases, where there's an earliest possible date. That phase two is earliest May eighteenth. She may push back. One thing we could do is kind of just treat it along those lines. We'll tie our plan to allow some opening uh to the public to the phases. And when they go to phase two, you know, unless there's some reason here that makes our situation considerably different. Can then go with that. That way, you know, we're not necessarily picking arbitrary dates as much as going with the full state guidance as they go.
There's nothing here in the courthouse that's not accessible right now, is there? So I don't, I don't know why we'd open it up. If people can do business like they need to, that may be a little, little harder to do. But that's one reason I wouldn't open it back until we can get that taken care of.
As far as, get what taken care of, as far as the, like the sneeze guards and and cleaning supplies and things, yes, absolutely.
Well, make sure we got the mask and all that.
Well, and I think it's, it's gonna be a good practice for not just now, but going forward. It's not a bad idea to have those things for even at flu season. So um let's just set things up to be um as proactive as possible. Um like we discussed, it it is about protecting our staff. But it's also about protecting the people who have maybe been staying in their homes. And this is gonna be their first outing is to come pay their taxes at the courthouse. So we wanna put all the things in place to protect our public just as much as we do our employees.
You wanna go with like two weeks of an earliest date?
That's, well, I'd say we'll decide the next uh meeting.
Next meeting. I'll go along with that.
That way it gives us time to get some other things in place.
And I think it allows us also time to really, I know we've started developing our strategies, but to really have a fully developed strategy for going forward. I know for a lot of the local public who would come for stuff like taxes and those type of things. I think a lot of that plan's been developed. Um like I said, I'm hoping for ours, for the court to have a plan built, but that's one that's. To me at least, I think our biggest concern is because they are not from this community. A lot of them are from Ford County. We're dealing with situations where in the past, of course, the, a lot of times people will come in for court. Will come in and wander around and those type of things for how we're gonna do this in the safest way possible. For the county public, for the county employees. For uh, you know, the staff that'll be up here and for those defendants as well. Because the one thing we're looking at too that we have to see with the court defendants is everyone else has a choice. Everyone else who wants, who's gonna come here to do stuff has a choice. Um you know, coming to pay their taxes, they can mail them in. Coming to do other things, they have a choice. The defendants for court, you come to, you're gonna, they're gonna come to court or we're gonna make them come by a warrant. Um and so. I think waiting till the eighteenth would be a good balancing act.
I'll go along with eighteenth.
My thing good.
Okay. Just wanted to revisit it since we hadn't discussed it, you know, past, past the end of April. So I wanted to at least have that conversation and kind of get a plan in place for for what we need to do next, so. Okay, that is all I had. Did you guys have any other questions?
I'm like that. I think you've done a good job. And I haven't heard but one complaint and after I explained it to them, well, they, they went along with it.
Thank you. Yeah, the conversations with business owners went really well um this this weekend. Of course, it, like I said, it was really hard. Our our county plan was gonna vary a little bit in that we were going to allow salons to open. I think there's a a very large difference between the salon barber shops that we have in Kiowa County and the ones that they have in Topeka and Kansas City. I think we could um regulate things a little bit more um to allow one person in there at a time. Where I know that that's maybe not the case in larger cities, so it was, it was unfortunate that that was in her executive order. Cause then all of our businesses, most of our businesses could be open at this time. But two more weeks and we'll revisit it and see what's going on.
And Carrie, as far as the procedural masks for county employees, do you guys still have some of those for?
We have some, but we are not able to get anymore at this point. So that's why I gave everybody one and gave them a bag and told them to hang on to it for dear life, because it it's very limited.
Just curious about that.
We're, yeah, we're working on it. Um Ray is working very hard at trying to get, to get more things. It's just.
Do we have any idea on maybe when those would be available or when we would have more of those?
Um I I will check with him and find out. We had placed an order and and it was supposed to be on its way and then I I believe it was um seized by the government to go other places, so. There's a little bit of that, there's a little bit of that going on. Um but also cleaning supplies, you know, if you were to go into Dylan's and try to buy cleaning supplies. Um it's very limited right now and so that, that is something else that we're gonna need to really. As Kristi had mentioned, we really have got to pay special attention to the sanitation that's going on in our, in our county buildings. When we, when we open things up, so.
One thing that'll help is the weather warming up. People like me wear glasses, those masks. When it's cold out, they fog over. And they won't now.
And they won't fog over. It's the little things in life, isn't it? So, okay, well, that is all I have.
Cause you're gonna bring a thing up about employees.
What was your recommendation on employees? So that way, cause we have employees that's wanting to know.
Okay, um with with that, you know, we had previously discussed um employees um still doing a. Oh, what's the word I'm trying to look for? Like a, an altered schedule.
Staggered schedule.
Schedule and the governor did suggest that remote uh working still be done when possible in her executive order. I have that with me if you'd like to view it. Um so with that in mind, um. You know, I I guess we should, we could go ahead and revisit the, having the county employees come back to work then at a later date.
So if you continue what we're doing now?
Continue what we're doing.
And if you could work remotely.
Revisit it to eighteenth.
I think we need to probably revisit a little, a little earlier or set the date later, so that way we we're giving people notice. I feel like it's a bit unfair that it's just been, well, let me tell you what your work schedule is tomorrow or. And I know that they're on, they're on call, but I would like to be able to give people at least a week of of what their schedule is gonna be. Going forward.
Think the department heads, you know, make sure they're notified that we'll make that determination then, then I think they're on notice. And I mean, right now, I think we effectively have every employee is either coming in part time, part of the time during the week. Or is working full time from home.
We actually have no employee that hasn't come here from the courthouse unless Sue. I don't know Sue's schedule. But everybody else has come in at least one day, two days, three days a week and staggering that and working from home. So I can vouch up for here at the courthouse.
Okay.
So right now, we have every, every employee is at least working part time. And even, and a lot of ours that aren't, that are coming in, you know, maybe two or three days a week are working from home the other days. And so I don't think it'll be a huge transition and we need to make that change.
She's actually, she, the governor is actually um talking about remotely working clear through phase two as well. Um but we can revisit that at a later time and see how how things go with the opening. Of course, that'll depend on that.
I will send out an email to the supervisors. I'm pretty sure they're all watching, but I'll go ahead and send out that emails to let them know to continue on doing what they're doing. With their schedules for their employees and that they will revisit it and on the eighteenth.
Okay.
And unless you guys call a special meeting sooner, if we have everything up and running and we can get open, you know, sooner the better, to be honest.
The sooner the better.
I just wanna protect.
But with caution, with caution. I think, you know, we take everything kind of a week at a time and see what happens with our neighbors. I sa- I still maintain that we, we did everything that we set out to do initially. Our goal was to flatten the curve. Uh the number of people infected in Kiowa County and to give us some time to get some more PPE, some personal protective equipment. And we've done both of those things um with the steps that we've taken and so um. I know we have two positives, but two positive cases, but they're, they're both doing well. And so I feel, I feel much better about where our numbers are sitting than than when we all sat down here initially. So, and we were discussing COVID, so.
Okay, Carrie.
All right.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
I guess better close the board of health meeting and reopen the commission meeting. Jay, you're up next.
Do we need to set that deal to two weeks?
No, we already have our program in place. Ours doesn't have a set, like our resolution for where our county employees are doing. And for the closure, um I believe, I don't believe either of them had a set end date. It was just until further notice. And so you guys are just not making a decision on that now and just determining, you pretty much just said you'll revisit it then, so.
Revisit on eighteenth, yeah.
Um we got a couple of in, drive entrance culverts that we're gonna see about doing this week. I got the uh gopher getter, got it started last Friday. I think this year. Instead of uh doing everything solid. Uh I think we're really getting a uh better control of them. But uh just gonna take the tractor down the blacktops and where we see the gopher mounds, the activity. Then we'll pull in there and and uh go for, use the machine in there. Uh instead of, uh I think we can get by without having to do a whole bunch of one calls that way. And and uh just see how that goes this year anyway. I I think it's made a big, uh big difference. I mean, they're not gonna get rid of them, all of them, but it's, it's, it's helping, I think. Got some mowers going this week. Kind of depends on where you're at and what the chemical done that they sprayed last fall. But uh there's some places that uh, you know, trying to get ahead of it and there's some rye that's definitely growing and headed out. So uh some places might not need it, but gonna go ahead and get after it. So uh I might see about hiring two or three part-time help this year again, like we did in the past. Uh just to see how it goes for, for a while before, before advertised for that. I was thinking about starting asphalt work uh later this week or next week. But uh probably go ahead and put that off a couple of weeks yet. Especially since we have to. Go to Dodge to get, get oil, so I guess we'll, we'll hold off on that for a couple of weeks. Guess that's about all I've got. Uh probably keep operating like we have, half the crew one week, half the crew the next week. Keep the landfill Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday, um or Saturday, I mean. I was wondering about when we do start back, open back up since the, since the days are already a little messed up. Just kind of think about it. I wondered about not opening back up on Mondays, keeping the landfill closed on Mondays. But having uh the guys come in or one guy, uh they can be doing maintenance work, uh picking trash up. You know, when they're not having to worry about uh somebody coming in and having to go down and cover it up. And maybe they can get, get things straightened up a little bit better out there than than what it is right now.
So that would leave us open on Wednesdays and Saturday?
Uh when we get back to regular, regular days.
Okay.
It'd be Tuesday through Saturday.
Okay.
Five days a week.
It's working good right now, Jay.
Well, I mean, yeah, uh I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm, it it's uh. If we don't change it, it's, it's not gonna be that big of a deal. I mean, uh it just, just to be a matter. The guys having a, not to worry about, and Monday's probably the slowest day that that uh of the week. With as far as people coming in, but, but yeah, I mean, it's not a, it's not a big deal if we leave it like it is. And uh, you know, guys just need to pick it up a little bit and. Get things cleaned up and straightened up, so, but. That's all I've got. Guys got something else?
You're going to straighten that culvert up south in Monville there?
Yeah, back to be a good morning right this morning with it being wet out, they could go down there and cut the end of it off.
All you gotta do, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Just the parents is the only problem.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it'd be a good, good day to do that. Sure would. Yeah. Okay?
I hadn't heard any complaints, Jay.
I hadn't either. I'm good. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jay.
I'm gonna go get me a drink of water, late.
You wanna call a five-minute break or just?
Yeah.
Do we wanna call a quick break or just gonna go get a drink of water?
Well, yeah.
I don't care.
Be gone just a little bit, the water running.
In that case, I'm gonna drink some of my coffee. They won't let me bring it in here.
Got your fix. Got your fix.
You what?
Got your fix.
For a minute. Does that mean next meeting we can start meeting down in our old room again, or?
If we open up to the public, we can, because otherwise we still have to video.
Yeah, so in the next meeting now, we still have to meet up here until you guys make that determination.
Unless, what about the guidelines on the six-foot socially, socially?
Oh, yeah.
Because that room is almost, it's going to be really hard.
Well, how many times do you get ten people in that room? Very seldom.
Very seldom, you're correct.
Well, but it's the maintaining six feet that I don't think we can do in that room, even when we-
Even with your guys' tables and, uh, where the, where, I mean, we, I mean, it's, I guess we could just move the room completely around, but I know there's people that want to come talk to you guys about their budget request, and I've asked them to hold off until we obviously open up. I've invited them to do telephone conferences, but some of them want to come in and actually see you guys, so. Is there something we have to look at to be able to move back down there?
The six feet is going to be our biggest problem, because I don't, my recollection from the phases, I don't think the six feet goes away until the phase out in the middle of June.
I believe so.
I don't think we can do that in that room, really.
Definitely can talk with Carrie.
But if we do it up, keep, have, keep doing it up here, you can still open it to the public.
Absolutely.
That-
We'll have to take-
Till courts come back and then we, we can't be anywhere.
Right, we just can't, don't have enough room and space out down there.
And if we, even when the court comes back, we could still do it up here, we're just going to have to break things down. We're not about to do anything.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Okay, guess we're down to Christie.
Okay, so I was approached, um, a couple of days ago, um, you guys are aware of the Stars of Hope, um, organization? Um, that is, and I apologize, I don't have all the details on that program, but surely you guys remember after the tornado, an organization came in and helped construct the red barn, and they painted all those stars and they placed them everywhere. Of course, that thing has just really taken off and they travel all over the United States, uh, uh, doing the same thing. Um, I was approached to see, right now, uh, Matt Dighton and Jeff Parnas are the, um, individuals that, uh, drive the bus around to the different, uh, places for the events, and they are wanting to know if they could park their, um, bus, the Stars of Hope official bus, in our barn for up to two months until everything kind of slows down and they can get back on the road and continue on doing what they do. Um, I've spoke with Che and, um, he said to, uh, he agreed that we should bring it to you guys to make that approval, because right now that barn is closed to any use. So I feel more comfortable of making you guys or having you approve them to store that bus in there or not, instead of making me make that decision. So if you guys are in favor of allowing them to, to store the bus, I would need that, um, approval, and if not, uh, you know, I will let them know either way what you guys decide, but they asked, and, uh, right now, I believe the bus isn't here in Kiowa County, it's somewhere else, but, um, Matt, uh, actually reached out to Ray and then Ray reached out to me about our barn. I asked about, um, legalities, um, didn't feel like there really was any, because, you know, the bus has their own insurance and stuff like that, unless there was something that happened with our barn mechanically.
It's bar, yeah.
So it doesn't sound like it'd be that big of a liability to have it out there.
Legally, it's not a huge deal unless, I mean, if it gets hit by a tornado or something like that, we're not going to be liable for their bus. The only thing we would be, could be liable for their bus is if something in our building causes damage to it, you know, an electrical fire or those type of things, um, could cause us to be liable for it, uh, as far as from the people's point of it. Um, Christie, were you able to get the dimensions of it?
I, I didn't, but I asked Ray, and Ray said that barn is capable of holding the bus as well as Grant's media trailer and my election trailer out there.
Okay, that was the concern I had, um, one, beyond the legal liability sample, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to have to displace any of our stuff that's already in there. And right now, of course, it's not being used for the public, um, about two months, would that push it into the time? If, of course, it's able to go forward, that the rodeo would be-
Well, that's what they are looking at, um, uh, right now, it looks like the radio, rodeo is being planned, still, um, scheduled at the end of this month, but more likely it will be pushed back a little bit more, so if that, something like that arises, since we have an agreement with the rodeo club, we would have to have them move the bus and then they can move it back.
I would see no problem with letting them use it, as long as they know if it became open, we would need them to move it out. Outside of that, I have no problem with it.
Place they've been parking it, what happened, they take?
Well, they've been traveling. They've been traveling around the United States, and now they're on a standstill, maybe a vacation, I, I honestly don't know. All I know is that they're back and they're going to be off for a couple of months, and they just need a place to store the bus.
What do you think, Bert?
I don't have no problem with it. I mean, they'll have to understand if we have an activity out there and it has to be moved, it has to be moved.
I don't believe that there will be any issues with that.
Yeah. Because I mean, it's plenty of room, I mean.
Will somebody then get a key?
No, actually, we'll, um, allow them to park it in there and they won't have access to it without, um, maintenance or myself or, you know, rodeo, I mean, somebody that already has a key. I'm not going to issue another key for that. They need in to get into their bus, they can, um, contact us and we can make arrangements to let them in the barn. And it's just to protect your equipment-
Right.
-as well as mine and stuff like that.
Will the bus have keys in it so we can move if we need to?
I, if-
That would be a very good thought, I think, because otherwise we're going to have to get ahold of Matt, aren't we, or somebody?
We're going to want to get ahold of them to move it.
Yeah, I don't think we want the liability moving their bus.
But what if they're not around?
I bel- I, I honestly don't know, Ron, but that's something I can talk to them about before we approve that, 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 uh, um-
Leave a phone number, we can get in touch with them.
That he'll have to be here to be able to move that vehicle within, you know, twenty-four hours or whatever.
Well, it's not like there's going to be an event jump up out there-
No.
-that we don't know about that we need the barn for, that we wouldn't have plenty of time to leave them a message, that we need the bus out of here on the twenty-fifth or whatever.
If there's anything, it'll be for the rodeo at the end of the month, but after speaking to, uh, um, a couple of individuals, it looks like it'll be moved maybe possibly into later or actually into the fall, early fall.
Also, us taking the keys could transfer us into a Bailey, which could then make us in a standpoint where we actually really do have liability-
Liability, yeah.
-for the care and control of it. Right now, we're just permitting them to park it in there.
Yep.
We have no, nothing, we're not.
Don't have control of it?
No.
No. But it's totally up to you if you guys want to allow it or not.
I have a problem with it.
Okay.
Wanted in a motion? I'd make a motion that we allow them to park the bus in our red barn for up to two months or until we need it. Second.
It's been moved and second, we allow the Stars of Hope-
Mm-hmm.
-park their bus in our red barn. Is there any more discussion on this? Do you suppose we need to talk to the four-H clubs that was the, uh, Fair Board? Were they going to be using that?
Well, the fair has been postponed as well.
Oh, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
I never heard it.
And I think the way you guys have phrased it, said it where we're fine. We're letting them use it until-
It needs to be used.
We need it moved.
Yeah, if something comes up-
Yeah.
You know, if fair or whatever changes and the fair is able to go forward before that two months up, they're going to have to move it.
Yeah.
Yep, I know, okay, so.
Okay. It's been moved and second, we allow the Stars of Hope to park the bus in the, the red barn. Both in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you, and I will, uh, contact Matt to, to let him know. He realizes this.
Well, we're at a low until eleven forty-five.
What do we got then?
It's just-
Unless you want the commission to discuss ahead of that. Jay, you're not on there, but do you have anything?
No, I, I pretty well covered everything I had last time. Of course, we're going to have the auction on Thursday, so hopefully we can get that thing sold.
Did Bert and John need to be at that?
Hmm? I, maybe good if John's there to-
Yeah.
Maybe have you handle the actual-
I'll do it, I don't care.
Auctioneering of it.
I did send out texts to the people that I know are interested, letting them know that it was still on schedule.
We may want to, do you, who would have put it up on the website? Would that be?
Uh, that would have been Matt. I asked him, um, I put it on my fir-, uh, my clerk's page, and, uh, I asked him to put it on the county website. I have not checked it, but I'm sure he has.
Okay.
Somebody did comment on my post and ask about, uh, what the contents were, and I honestly don't know if there's contents that are in that building.
The resolution that we put out said they had the right to inspect. I have no idea what's in there.
Well, I just, uh, commented that, uh, it's the structure and the property that the structure remains on. Probably everything that's in there would go with it, I guess, because-
All the rats and roaches go with it. There's not a lot in there. I think there's a few old desks and a couple of old tables and a few things like that. I was told that, uh, Coker was going to go get his bell sometime this week.
Good, okay.
And I was also told by somebody that lives down there that there'd been a fair amount, as in three or four, uh, out-of-county people down there looking at the school, so we have, maybe have more of an auction than we think.
Really?
That'd be good, that'd be good.
He said, uh, Hank County was telling me he'd seen several out-of-county tags come down there and stop and look in the school, so, I don't know.
I drove past it, it probably got me down as one of them.
That could be too.
I did drive through an old school, looked it over there.
Oh, you're probably one, okay, that lays it down to two. Y'all want to get a poo started on what it's going to bring? It's, be a wide scale there, I don't know. It'll be interesting, at the very least.
Whatever you guys get is more than what we had before we had sold it, so.
This is a fact.
And more so, it's also not something that we're paying insurance on, maintenance, upkeep, or having me have nervous breakdowns every time I think about the liability of it.
I never did, I was going to ask Donna what the insurance was. It didn't show up on my sheet gives of the day, did it?
It would have been in the breakdown of the book. The book is actually, um, five hundred and seventy-eight pages that I have to print off.
I guess the insurance got to be a thousand dollars on it a year, didn't it?
Uh, I s- I would seriously doubt it, I honestly don't know. I can look that up and give, and email it to you to let you know. Unless you want me to email you that PDF, unless you want me to email you that PDF and you can scan through the-
Be almost cruel.
Five hundred and seventy-eight pages, because that's what I'm going to have to do. I will look that up and I will email it to you.
See, I would say that emailing out the vouchers is easier to go through than coming over going through.
I like it.
But still don't have the, the invoices with it, that's-
Right.
That's the only problem that I see.
Yeah. That would be, uh, very time-consuming and, um-
Yeah, you couldn't do that.
I'd have to scan those all in and email those to you. If you guys want to look at the vouchers like we have always done, you're more than welcome to look at the vouchers. Um, we just started the whole emailing it so that a way you guys didn't have to actually come here. But the vouchers actually go downstairs and they're in your old commissioner room. You guys can go look at those anytime after AP's done, it's just we're not allowing you guys to come to the office to look at anything, it's just down there. But if you guys prefer the reports being emailed to you, we can continue that, um, and if you have any questions on any of the vouchers on the report, we can, um, at, you know, say if you have one or two, Ron, I could actually pull those, scan those in and send those to you. I don't have a problem with that, too, but when you get a stack of vouchers, this is the-
Oh, yeah, you can't do the-
I, I can't, I can't.
Invoices that way.
But we could do that if you guys would like that. But I've never heard anybody say anything about the vouchers, so that you guys-
This last time, it was about two-
I know Ron looks at them.
Two items on there, I would have liked to send you invoice.
Well, there's one that, that-
Once in a while you run across one, you know, it looked like maybe a little excessive or something, I just, you wonder what it was for.
Yeah.
Well, next time you run across something like that, please let me know. We will pull that voucher, we'll scan it in, and we'll email it to you so that a way you guys can look at it prior to the meeting, so that a way if you have any questions on it, we can contact the supervisor, because once it comes to the meeting, it gets approved, so, but whatever you guys want to do.
Because a lot of, you know, seem like you break a lot of motor grader glasses out, don't you? And glasses is expensive. I wonder who, how they doing that?
That'd be a question for your public works supervisor.
Let's just start using Saran Wrap and that way it'd be easy to fix. Put some plasticized in it. Yeah. I like Saran Wrap better.
I think they might have some issues seeing through the Saran Wrap. I mean, eh, the first sheet is clear enough, but once you start patching it, it's just really hard to see through. And then we get a motor grader driving through someone's yard and, you know, like just-
Backing over the mailboxes.
You know, how many guys take the phone out and everything?
Eight hundred dollar mailboxes.
Is that what that mailbox was?
I think it was, it was outrageous price. And it wasn't, it wasn't a county truck that done it though, was it?
No, it wasn't.
I know, would we? Nope.
I never did see that mailbox, I'd kind of liked to have seen it. Well, has anybody else got anything? If not, I'm going to turn this being, get ten oh-two, that's what I got.
Ten oh-two.
All right. Ten oh-two is correct.
What kind of cell phone you got, John?
That'll hold one. That old Star Trek one?
An old Star Trek one?
Uh, it's a GE, I think, no L.